Approve the minutes from previous meeting or meetings. We had one meeting.
Make the motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting Tuesday, July ten, twenty eighteen.
A motion second for approval of meetings from Tuesday, July ten, July two thousand and eighteen. Julie?
Aye.
Tom? Mike? Brian?
Aye.
Clarence and Payroll?
No questions.
There were no questions?
Nope.
Awesome.
We're making motion to approve the Clarence and Payroll.
Second. We have a motion in second for approval of Clarence and Payroll. Julie?
Aye.
Tom? Mike? Brian?
Aye.
Mayor report? Jerry?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Sorry to see you all. Glad to have you back.
Not a whole lot happened in July. We did have a couple of burglaries. That'll be worked on right now. There are several suspects that we're working with. Other than that, we had a lot of social service calls in town. Lot of dog barking complaints. Other than that, not been too bad in July.
Been too hot. Anything else coming outside?
Unless it's one, two, three in the morning. Or contact activity.
That's been taken care of.
Nothing we can do about it tonight, but I was just wondering if there's any kind of a trend or change over time here. I looked at fourteen and in fourteen there was seven tests for the year and so far this year we've had nine. And in fourteen there were five vandalism for the year and so far this year we've had thirteen. And that, that's not a good trend.
It's not a good trend, but sometimes as you go through life, especially in school, as we know, some grades are just a little more around you than other grades are. To that point where when you last four or five years, you was coming to where we're gonna have more issues with certain groups of people in that certain age group than what we've had before. That's kinda what's going on right now. Plus, it seems like it's been a really hot rainy summer and school's starting, so now they're really starting to get active before school starts.
One last call before school?
Yeah.
I see there were three dogs at large and three, um, dog barks. I know there was a dog that I heard of that was chasing, um, kids up by Design School. I was also walking one night and this dog was, um, barking and following me the whole way.
Same dog?
Mm-hmm, same little dog. Was, um, since that dog's been chasing kids, is that considered aggressive now?
If it's chasing, it's acting aggressive, that would be a dangerous dog, yes.
Okay, because the, I know, um, Bruce was called on it. And did he write a ticket?
I know Tyler wrote one that next night, that night or the next morning, he wrote a ticket to them.
So if it's chasing the kids, would that be considered then? Or was it just, what was the ticker written for it? Was it just?
For a dog running at large?
Just dog running at large, okay. They didn't have tags on it or anything?
I don't, not that I know of.
I know, I'm just stating that for the record. It's...
Some don't put their tags on.
Lindsey Stewart, they have a couple dogs.
I don't know, top my head if they're trying to.
Also, I know in the past months, we've brought up different, um, unlicensed vehicles that have been like on the streets and parked and stuff like that. Do you know, has Bruce started like a spreadsheet or anything to kinda keep track of these and where they are and how they're being taken care of? Do you know?
I know he's been working on several and I know some have been gone and taken care of. I know it's getting licensed and it's getting gone, but I don't know if he had a whole list, 'cause I've never seen one.
I don't know. I guess, that'd be something I'd like to see if it was, you know, people reported or if it's gone or if it's still sitting there, yeah. How it's getting depleted or crossed off. I don't know if that's something that, you know, you could talk, just because I know a long few months, there's been a lot every month.
I want to name one Jerry, let me check what Bruce's, that speech property down there, that's getting to be a residential. I don't think it's salvage yard or whatever.
Okay.
Need to check, we need to check in on that and get that cleaned up.
Can do that.
And I think the people living in the brown house across from Huffords, that van that they were driving around, that was never licensed or registered and I just, I think it'd be nice if there was like a list of them all and, okay, this one is taken care of, this one is taken, just housekeeping, you know?
We need to do a list on streetlights, so there's always one we can do that, too.
That'd be great, that'd be great.
Anything else for Jerry? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Susan?
Um, well, the good news is we got the eighty thousand dollar EDP grant that we wanted. Originally it was seventy-five thousand and Missy had a little bit more money and they asked if we would like an extra five thousand. So we said, "That never happens, so why not?" We took it. The council will need to sign a pass a resolution or order to formally accept this award. And I gave Bruce the work plan for it, so he could have some time to review that, but Mike was gonna draft it up and we had until September twenty-fourth to get that done, so we won't do that tonight. So that money's gonna create a hundred and five thousand dollar revolving loan fund to assist our new and original businesses. We've got three waiting in the wings to use this money already, so it'll be kinda nice. On the IRP, our application was submitted on July twenty-sixth. They told us there's eight point two million dollars available for funding. Applications are totally thirteen million. The average application score in the system is a hundred and forty, ours is coming in at one seventy-five. We have a very good chance of getting funded, but we're in the level they consider the last quarter of the year. So when you submit an application to the USDA and it doesn't get funded the first time, it rolls for the next three quarters. So all of the applications that have not been funded for the last three quarters are still in the pot with ours. And they can either choose to fund those because they have money now and then push ours off to the next quarter, or they can fund ours because we have a higher score and it's just a better application. So we'll just have to wait and see how that shakes out. For ECAP, one of the things that came out on the Culture Change Committee is that the community was asking us to maybe rebrand. So new logo, new tagline. Four brand marketers were identified. Prior to pursuing one of them, Brooke Curtis asked if the news office could have first shot at creating the logo. He thought being local and passionate about Plainview maybe would give him an edge and he offered to do it for free. So Darren Arlton and I said, "Okay, give it a shot." And he did. We had that meeting last Thursday night. Didn't have a huge turnout from the community, about ten, eleven people. And what was nice about it is we got to see three design logos, tons of different slogans and taglines. The community was able to, was interactive, was able to throw out their suggestions. They were redrafting, remissioning on the spot, taking suggestions. So they've taken all of that information, they've gone back, they're compiling all of that. And we're tentatively looking at August twenty-ninth as the final community meeting to see those three designs or how those designs work out. And then we'll choose two or three of them to put out to the community, the community will do a public vote. Whichever one wins would be our new tagline and logo. If for some reason this group who's attending the August twenty-ninth meeting is not in love with any of the designs, doesn't feel like any of them really should be the face of Plainview, we will go to one of the outside marketers and start the process over again. Entrepreneurial cultural, that was another one that came out of ECAP. The group wanted to see a more vibrant and active business chamber. At the last business chamber meeting, I brought up, um, some of the things that they were looking to offer, which is financial planning, business advice. There are free resources available to us. So they've asked me to start bringing these people to the chamber meetings to meet with, to meet with them. So the first two sessions are gonna be QuickBooks training and the second one is gonna be social media and marketing assistance for our chamber. Northeast Alaska Business Development Board, we had this meeting, it's a monthly meeting that we have. Last month it was in Pierce, hosted by Justin Arnold, our new UNL Extension rep. He was focusing on all of the community vitality programs that the university has. Since we just went through one of those programs, which is ECAP, he asked us to come and be a guest here, so we did. We had a really good response to that. We had a lot of communities, uh, email and call wanting the Google link to all of our surveys and our results because they're interested in doing that in their communities as well, so that went well. On the Department of Economic Development from the state, Mike and I hosted Lindsey Jessen yesterday, um, here in Plainview. She heard our presentation on ECAP and, uh, wanted to hear more about some of our recent successes, discuss our future goals and talk about how the DED can help with some of those things. And then we took her on a five dollar tour of Plainview. Uh, we identified some open sites that we had. One of the things that she does is she knows of the businesses in the area that are looking to expand or that are looking for a new site or they're looking for a different headquarters. So having those identified spots in our community is nice because if she hears of something that we did, then they bring those people here. On July eighteen, we were able to host Senator Breezy with Economic Developers and City Administrators from District Forty-One. The senator, um, expressed a desire to have follow-up meetings later on in the year, so he did enjoy his time here. Um, there's a little bit of a meeting recap there about some of the things that we talked about. In other notes, I have an update on our Farm and Supply Store. They are looking at a stock opening on August twentieth and a grand opening on August thirty-first. Um, if you've noticed, all the boxes and there's just been a lot of work going on, so they're getting ready to go. And then on the volunteer side, I'm still assisting the Pierce Fire Department. Um, I helped them get a grant for forty-two fifty from the Rousset Forest Service and they are gonna go after the FEMA grant for some breathing apparatus equipment, so we're getting ready to work on that, too. That's a little bit through, um, Pierce County development, too. Questions?
Thanks, Susan.
Thank you.
Kurt, you can go now. See that coffee in the library finally set up?
Yeah, better don't drain where that is.
You tried. You tried.
Well, that, go down to that library, they exit on the south side. Your bubbles on both sides.
I stowed one, you got it for this, right? Take pride. It was about the same thing.
That's a tough spot because it's so...
It's from the bottom of the center of the street. It's the bottom of the ground.
Yeah, there's a piece that comes over and it's sloping, so then, yeah, that's a tough one. You'd almost have to read that from the west some way and, and just have it barely right at...
Well, you're gonna have to drain it here and put a tile, put it down to the other end and maybe...
Yeah, that's a weird little flat spot on that street. If it's more than a trickle, it's not gonna flow. Or it's gotta be more than a trickle.
Well, it's Donald, we need a, a Justin sprinkler in the library, too. I mean, she needs to put water on the grass and out the street.
You tried.
Yeah.
Kurt, where we at with the nitrate temperature high or?
Banshell, we got that rebuild, uh, I think it was about seventeen-three. And I tested the YZF, did a special test, ten-one, ten point one, so... I'm gonna order another one and see if we can, but then I'll have to go back and, uh, test for the last, what, eight years? So we can try and get that one put back online, so... Banshell, I don't know, we're gonna do that one. That's a lot to overcome there, so...
We have about literally five different expert opinions on what to do with the banshell well and we'll just have to weigh them out and present everything from spreading out to going down to making it more around, to punch through another hole or get rid of it completely.
Has anybody considered that it's all the same water, whatever they do like that? Might be something to consider.
Oh, I tell you what, it's amazing what they know.
What happened with this one that you, you approved the one well and it did get better?
No, that's been, that's the emergency status for...
But they put new wells and lowered it and all this, did it make any difference?
They didn't lower it, they just revamped it.
They revamped it, redid it, we, we still have a little punch in that, but, uh, the, the hope there was, well, it needed to be repaired and upgraded, but the hope was there that it would be, there's so many, what's the word I'm looking for? More pressure.
The efficiency.
The efficiency would, it would be better and that it might, um, lower, you know, at the same time, according to Sargent, which is one of the experts, and they are, Sargent's a very good operation, but I, I, you can't be wondering, so...
Was that well tested by the school?
That one's all right, I mean, that school well was, and that's, that's the big kicker there, you're blocking halfway.
That's, yeah.
That's probably right at five.
Different vein or something.
That must be.
The YZF well was off the charts eight years ago and at ten-one, that is, um...
Phenomenal.
Phenomenal, I mean, it's beyond belief. Now, whether he continues to test out, we have to do eight years worth of expedited testing. They don't make you go through all of it, but they're wanting to see a lot of tests to test it out, so... And if YZF can go back onto the, the system and test out well, literally well, then it will, you know, then they will have three on it. We can always operate right now currently with two. Two in the water tower is sufficient for a city of this size and we've been on that for some time now. In the foresight of someone, somewhere, somehow, we have four wells, you know, and, uh, there are many communities that have, some just have one, which is an accident waiting to happen, but...
What are they testing across the board? YZF is at five?
YZF is actually the last one, which is the, uh, well that was shut down for the last eight years, ten point one.
School well.
YZF was around ten.
Yeah, the school well by Celine is the one that's way down.
I mean, it's, that new well or they average about five.
The, the new one down here.
New one's down there, yeah.
Yeah.
Does that banshell well float a lot of water or is it?
Uh-uh, that's the worst company we've got.
We really wouldn't be out anything if it got shuttered.
No, no.
It'd be nice to have YZF as your...
Yeah, it would be just...
So we're kinda in a swap, you know, we're not quite there yet, though. And efficiency, the banshell well is by far...
Yeah, that's, that's the worst company on the job, so it's not a, if we put, if we put that on emergency, it's not a big deal.
Plan B, something should blow, or not blow up, but I mean, something should cause us even more concern, maybe to go to a blending. But that's gonna have us put in blending the way DHHS wants it done, not the way we believe it should be done. So there'll be some cost there if we had to go that route. That's Plan B. Plan D or E would be way down the line drilling new well, but we don't wanna go there, but obviously we're gonna be looking at this every year, every quarter.
Well, it seems like when the water table's high, that's when the nitrate on that one is high.
And we're high.
Yeah, we're high. I'm still running now?
Yep. I see they're starting to irrigate hopefully that'll slow it down. Like the country called out there, that's the worst, I, I don't know, the table's that high or what? It's backed up all the way down to three fairway.
Really?
Yeah. Got water just coming out.
Cattails growing up there.
Yeah.
Well, water edge makes it more...
Yeah, no, it really doesn't make it more, because that's usually where I end up, so...
Kurt, did you ever, uh, check that, uh, water shut off at the old, uh, that brick house down by the six place? I can't think of his name.
Well, um... Let me see his face.
Yeah.
Oh, Rod.
Rod, yeah.
Yeah, Rod, uh...
Rod Cook.
Rod Cook.
Oh, yeah, that's curb stop?
Yeah.
We got, I got located in it, but I haven't done it yet, you know?
Yeah. Four, five, please?
Hopefully, yeah. Yeah, I got located called in, all right, so...
Okay. I don't know what's wrong with it, but...
We might as well into curb box.
I wanna commend Kurt for this last month in particular, and I won't always do this, but we'll always have our conversations, but this last month, being shorthanded, um, without Troy, this is really a two-man-for-their-experience show. And Troy's been gone a lot of the month, rightfully so, and Kurt, instead of saying anything and complaining, just picked up the ball and took the bill and rusted his job and they just picked up the slack. And Troy is back now and, um, came in today and has done some street sweeping and some of the things we need to catch up on for the fall and he's gonna do some things with the electric plant, but, um, in, in all fairness, and I'm talking to the choir here, it's, uh, been a tough month. I've been with these guys a long time and this, uh, this one hit pretty close to home, pretty hard.
Agreed. Anything else you can come up with, Kurt?
Were, uh, were you ever gonna give, and if we talk about that before we shoot this straight, see what we can do for the drains?
If we can just get that moment, in fact, we have Gary from Engineer coming up on that stack project. I'll ask him to go and he'll shoot that.
Just to see where we're at with that.
Down in the road that goes on...
Down here.
Down by the...
Yeah, down here goes the border station.
Yeah, yeah. Just shoot it to see what the, the, an apron's gotta be higher or whatever than dirt and ditch or something, I don't know. It'd be nice if we could get that straightened out, but maybe have him shoot it.
Just do that, you know, if you wanna wind it down some with Gary, just make sure we ask him to see it.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Kurt.
Mike, do you want to go now?
Uh, I can go with the, uh, budget here and kinda combine it all into one. I would, uh, allow a couple minutes or give up a couple minutes on the report. I know that Melissa's here and we're not particularly addressing on the agenda, but it might not be a bad idea to maybe ask, that way she doesn't have to stay the whole night and kinda while she's here and if there's anything that we can do for the future, if you wanted to have her take a couple minutes.
Go ahead, Melissa. For yours?
I guess I...
Why not?
Just inquiring about the, um, letters that were supposed to go out, um, near the health board and where we're at with one house in particular.
I would assume the one house is the one in particular.
The one house.
Um, letters did go out, so I can answer that question. Um, and they've all been summoned, uh, as far as what they need to do, the timeframe. Uh, it's not on this agenda, but we'll have to meet again to see, put them back on if they're ready. Um, I went by it last night, uh, from an outside, not to, since there was no action. I can tell you it doesn't look like much. It's kind of a, still a creepy little place over there, so I think we need to kinda push that envelope, which would be my suggestion, to the health board and you, Mr. Mayor, so...
I think they're advertising right now, so they should be in good shape.
Yeah, I got for rent signed out front, so it must be all good.
I took care of that.
Well, I mean, I would say we'll follow it up and make sure that that's what we put on the, the health board to go ahead and not let it continue on.
You're gonna wait till budget's up?
Yeah, yeah, I've only got about a couple things, so...
Okay. Um, moving on. Number five, mayor appointment for, to the zoning board. I couldn't find anybody to do this really and then I had a thought, so I talked to Mike and between the two of us, we got Mr. Boyer, Mr. Dean Boyer, to say yes for the zoning board. So with your blessing, I would like to appoint Dean Boyer to the zoning board.
Make the motion to approve Mr. Dean Boyer for the mayor's appointment for the zoning board?
I'm second.
We have a motion in second for approval of Dean Boyer to the zoning board. Julie?
Aye.
Tom? Mike?
Aye.
Brian?
Go ahead.
On line six, Paul Backers, your interview. There's a couple here.
I don't know if I'm gonna come up or not, I guess.
I do.
Um, had a pretty successful summer. Had about a hundred and eighty-two kids playing from four to eighteen, again, four to nineteen. Um, had four tournaments this year hosted, three of them were, were pretty good size. The one clown days tournament, I think we had thirteen teams over two days. Had a ten-hundred tournament that was fifteen eight, fifteen teams, sorry, over six days. So had, had a lot of people in town for a few of those. Football started, our little, little kids' football just started this week. Have twenty-eight signed up for that. We've also been asked to help with volleyball, the little girls' volleyball, so I think we got twenty-four, twenty-five signed up for that. That starts next week, so staying busy. Only a couple things, I talked to Mike a little bit about it. We got some buildings up at the city, up, up at the ball fields that are in rough shape, just trying to get clarity. We pay for it, do we get help with it? How, how do we go about, the bathrooms up there, we just put a roof on it last week. We were afraid it was gonna get passed, past appointment or return there. Not half of it, I'd say a third of it was rotted out underneath, new sheeting, the whole thing, um, the siding's falling off. Just wondering what we do, how we do it? Is that our responsibility, is that the city's responsibility? We've never really gone there before, so I don't know. That, that's, that's one thing coming up in the near future. In maybe a little later future, the grandstands, I don't know, burn it down, tear it down, I, I don't know what's next.
I said right where he, where he was at when that was passed the first time and all I could do was shake my head, so...
The only other thing we got going on is just damn much vandalism up there and I, I don't know, um, so far we've been taking care of all of it. I think a camera system is in the near future for us. I, I don't, I don't know, I don't know what to do. But that's the big thing is the bathrooms at the little kids' field, um, is needing some help. Just don't know how to go about fixing it. If that's our deal, if that's the city's deal, if that's our deal as a whole, all of us, I don't... So that's, that's the only question I pose, I guess.
I, I have no problem with the agreement that was, uh, written in going forward to the bathrooms. We never really, I mean, the roof, they, they pretty well did and took care of it, so...
Just last weekend, the roof was taken care of, yeah.
And I, I would say, I have a budget that we've been working with the auditor and that, so I, that would be something on the, uh, utility side that we would budget in and probably try to take care of it, 'cause they do need a little help, right, Kurt?
Kurt, don't wanna talk about it. And, and the idea, you know, depending, here's, here's a reason, if we don't get any help from the city, we're willing, we, we already put the roof on, we'd be willing to side it. We gotta stop there, though, that's, that's all our budget would allow. The grand plan of it is, um, to go in and take those bathrooms out and put new toilets in, new floor coverings in. I mean, they're, they're in rough shape, new doors, the doors that are there, only three years old, Tim put them in, but they've all been kicked in. I, I don't know, I don't, I don't know how to keep kids...
You can't.
And it's the same kids that are up there enjoying the fields playing ball, so I, it blows my mind.
All they do is change age, but it's the same kids that, I mean, you're just watching different years kick the door and...
And I, I did get a quote today for cameras and, and that's, I mean, that's the next step for us and it's... But we got shit with the, with the big one through town when they were keying up cars. That's when they threw the new crow's nest, they threw baseballs through the windows. Um, just last week, somebody kicked in the door of the grandstand.
Tons of prosecution going on those things.
That is, that's heck of a good question. I don't know, I don't know.
I, I do know, in, in all fairness, not Jerry, I don't know how much you got involved, but I do know they've been reported because if they come in to us, I know Blake's done, and they are reported.
Oh, absolutely, I, I called Yost and I, he came up and took pictures. This one's a whole separate incident, the grandstand, they just kicked that in, in the last week and a half or so. I mean, cameras are the, are the first thing, we're, we're gonna do it, um, we're saving right in our bucks for that, but I, I, that's a drop in the bucket compared to two or three windows broken, really.
They're a bloody high.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
How do the, uh, since this is all on the same subject, but almost a... How do the, uh, since this is all on the same subject, but almost a side thought, how do the cameras save for the C and D construction or the, um, um, ball fields work on a wireless to the system we're already paying for? Cause we've already got, could I, is it possible to wire something up?
No, those, those are pretty well standalone units, I have a wireless link to the shop here, that's how you're getting these cameras.
Right.
But at any distance, that doesn't really, I mean, pass a block and a half, that, that link's no good for passing paid anymore.
So we had to go back to the, um, trail cam type of.
Well, back to the trail cam, we, we can do standalone units, I mean, I just priced them today for the ball fields, we're right at about nine hundred bucks for a four camera system, um.
Where's your base unit set then?
Well.
It's in the building there, you're kicking the doors in.
What we would do is, they do make lock boxes, about like a gun safe, leg bolts into the building, the wires come through, ground it in the back. They gotta work awful hard to get to it. I mean, it is, it's a gun safe, it's heat resistant, it's the whole thing, but if they wanna get to it and they get it, we have none. Um, the thing about those standalone units is you don't have to have internet to them, the only thing the internet provides, you know, is live viewing. So standalone unit up there or C and D wherever, if you notice something amiss within three weeks, then you can just go back locally and rewind and look through it.
Does that clear everything, or?
What's that?
How long does that last though?
Depends on how many cameras, um, I know the city system that we put in, it's, how many cameras, nine?
Nine.
Nine cameras, ten, ten cameras, I put a, a large hard drive in that, that's like a four terabyte hard drive. I'm guessing those ten cameras go about five weeks. So if something's missing, if something's broken, you do have to notice it in that five weeks, or at five weeks and one day, it starts recording.
Recording all work?
Yeah, yeah.
I always thought it was close to thirty days, but five weeks is probably.
Yeah, yeah, with that size, so it's, um.
It'd be nice if it was immediate, like a trail camera that had it Bluetooth through your phone.
Mm-hmm.
You know, something like that, so it would alert the officers, get their buds down there.
And, and that, that's, that's a possibility, um, the problem with it is every time a stray dog runs in front of it.
Right, right.
Every time out at the ball field, skunks, I mean, in town, dogs, anything, so that's, that's all a possibility, it's just.
Just being able to have it immediate, so.
Absolutely, absolutely, I know we've put a lot of them in around town and seems like every time the town gets hit with a new stray that's three or four more systems we end up putting in for the office, so.
How about just a common alarm? Put a alarm inside the bathroom.
Yeah, no, and, and all those things would take.
Not turned off?
Yeah, an alarm like that would take a full night, I mean, but yeah. And something like that for the off season, absolutely, when nobody's up there for seven months out of the.
Are you talking, if somebody, you know, that we flip a switch when you leave, last guy leaves, you flip a switch?
Well, any kind of homeowner's alarm, you know, if the door comes open and it isn't turned off, it's a.
Lights and sounds and sirens and.
Suddenly you get sirens, that would get somebody's attention.
And the problem we're running into is nobody's after anything, all they know, all we got is candy bars and pop, they just want great stuff.
There's that, like, the ring camera system that you could put on your doorways?
Mm-hmm.
That notifies you immediately, I mean, that would be, I'm sorry, cheaper than nine hundred dollars, but I know.
Absolutely, absolutely, the only thing with that is it is a reoccurring fee for rain.
Right.
Um, and data has to be available there, you have, have internet at the spot, um. Now, we provide internet up there for the ball season for free, I, I don't know what they would do for, for your own thing, I I don't. And really, if you can just hang a camera, it makes a lot of people think twice about even being around there, if it's just physically there.
Oh yeah, and you run, they look, see that camera, is that camera working or not?
And they, they'll go find somewhere where they know there's not one in a hurry, um.
What, what's the situation with just nightlights?
They're on the little concession stand, um, they come on at.
Good, good lighting, how do you light there?
And we put.
Reaction moment, maybe? No, there was not.
They're just on, it's at dusk of dawn, they're dusk of dawn lights, there's fifteen of them around it.
Yeah.
Doesn't.
The thing is, is if anybody's on the north side of that, don't matter how bright it is, I mean, the only person in the world that can see it is somebody at Ashburn's back deck, right? I mean, nobody, they're on the north side of that, nobody's driving in there, nobody's, and we haven't had a big problem there, it's just been kids breaking things, just windows, doors.
How far away is it, those cameras like pick up stuff that's visible?
Um, daytime, a hundred feet, nighttime seventy-five. So, I mean, you put a system up there, you put three or four around the main concession stand, bring one over to the crow's nest and one at the grandstands. Yeah, like I said, I think that's all something we would do as ball backers, our, our big thing is, we just, the buildings, we just don't know whose responsibility that is, is that, is that on us, I mean, there's things that need to be done, we just, I don't know.
If there's, if there's city buildings, I mean, a couple toilets or, I mean, not the eight hundred dollar toilets, but the, you know, hundred.
The two hundred, three hundred dollar toilets?
Yeah.
With long eight seats, we'll make a.
Sure, if you approve for the season.
Well, and we, we put together a really, we put together a really rough price list.
I, I think that's just what, I mean, if I had anything, like I said, I'm, I'm prepared on my end from the budgeting side, so I'm not too worried. I think it would behoove the ball backers to go ahead and price list things out, you know, kinda your wish list and then do the presentation in the spring and we can kinda hit at it, I think one of those would be, uh, you know, to look at the, the stuff that needs to be put into the buildings and even the crow's nest, I asked Blake about that, 'cause that was, that was a tough hit, you know, I had to go announce, uh, after the vandalism.
The night after.
Yeah, the night after, and I had my hand trying to avoid glass on this side, and it was, there was nothing thrown, it was just vandalism, so, so. We do need, I, I think, you know, we were just talking about this too, and that we probably, all the ball backers are here, on a friendly note, we, that fence, we need to figure out kind of where we stand, uh, with the fence, 'cause it's all in, and we got the, you know, bills and stuff, I know the ball.
Absolutely, um.
But what were you think, I mean, what were you thinking, I mean, I was just, I mean.
We didn't, we left that night not knowing for sure, um, whatever, whatever you guys are, are thinking, we were asked to go maybe look for some private donations, and we did come up with a thousand dollars private donations for that, um. But, but I, I don't know, I don't, I don't know what we, I mean, it was a year ago, we talked about it with the council, and I, there was never really uh, you guys pay this, you guys pay that, that I, that I can remember.
Yeah, I think there might have been something said, it's just long as we need, we need to always make sure, 'cause that ballbacker agreement, we work hand in hand, as long as we work together. I think at one time we talked about half, which it was a seven thousand dollar fence, but we know the ball backers don't have it, but you know, is it a thousand? But we probably, this is the night when we're talking about ballbacker agreement going forward, what the council, you know, was expecting or anything like that, so.
Absolutely, we, we talked about possibly coming back later in the year for a keynote grant to pay for some of that, so, so this is a good conversation to have, 'cause I don't know, I, I don't know when it's, it gets really gray when it's city property. Ball backers putting money into it, and here's our only concern, is so we, and it's happened in other towns, and that's the only reason it's a concern. So we put a whole bunch of funds into a concession stand, and I'm not saying it's gonna happen, but it has. In three or four years, somebody comes in and wants to wreck that concession stand from the city, and now the ball backers has got out of it, we have we have no right to that concession stand, we have, you know, that could go away anytime, so for us to put a large amount of our budget into it's hard, but to sit and have tournaments here and see it falling down around itself is hard too. So that's, you know, that's the big reason we jumped and put a roof on it before we knew who was paying for it, I mean, we paid for it obviously, but to go any further, we don't know.
Yeah, I think that just, you know, for clarity's sake, just the, the idea is, and it's tough when you put money, and I know Kevin's back there, put a lot of time and a lot of effort. Unfortunately, at least from my perspective, and the council should know, it's simply the city's property, end of story. So anything that goes on, unfortunately, it's like you're donating, like even the scoreboards, uh, the ball backers, you know, went after them and did a great job. But unfortunately, they become, when I do the liability and the insurance, and I insure all those, uh, through our carrier, then that's just considered all city property, including the concession stand.
Absolutely, and, and like I said, my concern, it just happened in Albion this year, is their ball program got cut out of their concessions. Okay, so a family member of somebody there came in and said, I want those concession stands for the summer, that looks like a moneymaker. So now the ball program's out of it. Wouldn't, would, that'd be fine, except the ball program doesn't wanna put all our funds into a building.
It's not yours.
That, that's not ours.
That'd be a simple matter to add to the agreement, they're gonna do these improvements, they get it for four years, or they get it for six years, or.
Absolutely.
Something.
Wouldn't be against that.
Bruce and I still have, and probably Blake has too, but Bruce and I have, uh, the copies, we have the all agreement, ball backers agreement several times, I remember going through it over and over and over again and talking about the details, and I, I don't have any problem, uh, 'cause I know what the ball backers have done, uh, for the unfortunately, like I said, you just have to know that at this point in time, if they decided to put a one million dollar facility out there in the ball field it's gotta go, and it would have to be, unless you add it to some agreement, the city's property, they would donate it back, so. Yeah, I mean, there's just no order out there.
We absolutely get that, I mean, we poured cement up there, we've built the crow's nest, we know those, those aren't our buildings, um. And, and here's what I'm thinking, if, if the city can make those buildings inhabitable, I mean make, make the roof decent, make the siding decent, any upgrades that wanna be done internally, I mean, there's things inside that, that could be done, I mean then I can see that being a ballbacker responsibility, any, you know, we're, we're trying to make the concession stand bigger, we're trying to make, you know but the roof and the structure of that building isn't there, I mean, the roof is now, I mean, you can, the, the structure itself, the.
The only way you can make it bigger is you're gonna have to get rid of your storage.
Well, and, and that's what, that's what I'm talking about, I mean, we have the school, we bought a new shed from them, a fifteen by fifteen shed that will be placed up there and become city property, obviously, um, and that's gonna be our storage, so you take the storage and make that concession stand. I understand that's an upgrade, that the city doesn't care happens one way or the other, so maybe that's on ball backers, but the building itself is, is kinda where I'm at a crossroads, is that us, is that you?
I think, I think the city, the whole we have a responsibility to maintain that building, I mean, that'd be my thought, is you know, it is city property and you don't want it to go to pot or it's gonna cost more money, you know.
And, and that, that roof was probably seven or eight years late, if I had to guess by looking at it, I mean, it was we had to tear sheeting off and replace all of it, it was, it was in rough shape, but, and we do, we have a, we have an awesome group of six, eight volunteers that show up for every project like that and put labor into it, um.
So you guys, you did that, paid for it and whatever, that part.
That's paid, we, we did it, it's done, it's, I mean we, we didn't, it seems like springtime comes along, we have so darn many projects up there, so anything we can get done in the fall, and that was the idea of getting this, and plus, we didn't know that it would survive another winter with, with the amount of water that was coming through the, the roof on the south side.
Well, but then if the siding's falling off, you still have blowing snow that's gonna get in behind that siding and.
The siding's in bad shape, um, and, and the, the reason the siding's in bad shape, and I think Mike said at one time that building was twenty-one years old.
Hmm, it's.
But it was seamless siding, the plastic stuff, and had a baseball field with foul balls and baseballs thrown around, I mean, you could tell.
Vandalism.
If, the vandalism of the doors, but you could tell every hole from a baseball that a kid didn't catch on all sides, but so, so the siding's rough. And it just seems like we got a lot to be proud of up there with a lot of things, and then you got that eyesore right in the middle of it, not only an eyesore, but then the bathrooms that are just.
They're odd, they're.
They're terrible.
They're just, they're just rough.
Are the bathrooms, like, I haven't been out there for years, are the bathrooms adequate, they just need new, uh.
I, I don't know, I mean, the, the sinks, the, the sinks all, they're pretty heavy and the sinks are staying up.
I think we put a couple new toilets.
The toilets are residential, they're commercial, which.
But I mean, the bathroom is a whole third.
Yeah, I, I think it's feasible, but.
Oh yeah, absolutely, if you.
You know, the urinals junk, I mean, while they go in there and throw rocks and gravel in there and blow everything up, you know, it's like you know, where, that thing's gotta run clear down.
I don't think I can put cameras in the bathroom, that might be.
Yeah, somebody might say something about that.
But, but we have those big tournaments there, and the guys go in the bathroom and don't care, it's, it's the ladies that you hear loading up in a car and headed to Casey's 'cause they're, they're skizzed out by the women's bathroom up there.
I'm feeling like that, Paige, that you're.
And, I mean, we've done, we've put fresh coats of paint on, we've painted floors, it's, it's just past that point, it's almost and I, I think the bones are all right, I think, take it back to studs and do some of that milk barn paneling that you can hose down if you need to, I, I don't know, I.
Hey, maybe what we need to do.
Huh?
This point in time, just have them get a list of what is needed and maybe a cost, but I don't know if we, if we can find that stuff cheaper, or like the stools and stuff, or.
We usually can go to Len Nelson, I mean, I'm gonna get a host there.
I mean, and I think that, you know, basically what's bad, and, and Blake knows too, is that we go to year to year, and to, to be honest, each year we've seen some great improvements, uh, you know, so keep in mind, I, I think this is the next logical step, take care of that building, so I'm all on board and no matter what, but you know last year we put in, how much did it take to put in that water system?
Uh, probably twenty-eight and ten thousand.
You know, so we did that, I mean, so, and those are the kinda things, I mean, you probably won't see as much, but it's not like that those ball fields each year that, that we don't have a capital improvement budget to do something with, and I know I'm gonna need lighting, there's just things that'll have to come around.
You're gonna have to get way ahead of the improvements with your cameras and alarms, or you're just sacrificing.
Sacrifices, and it has been a bad year for just str- strict onreyness.
It, it is, and, and they're not after anything, they just wanna price something, I mean, that's.
I would, I would say from this point forward, if you guys could get a list of what's needed.
Okay.
And stuff.
And bring it back.
Bring it down and, and maybe a price list, get it with Kurt and see if we can price stuff up and see where it's gonna.
Absolutely, and I, I came up with, and, and it's not an ungodly amount, I mean, we were at I think sixty-four hundred before the roof was done and we took care of that part of it, so, I mean, it's not an unlike, ungodly amount, and and the reason we can keep that price down is we have five or six pretty good guys with a hammer willing to put in a weekend here and there, so. So yeah, we're.
Does that Kevin myself fall off the ladder a few times?
Kevin, no, he doesn't get very high, he's about an eight footer. Um, but yeah, and wha- whatever you guys think with the fence, I mean, I, I don't, I don't know where we left at last year, um.
So my recollection, like I said, from the, the, at the time we did that was, you know, half, we put in half no matter what, and, but you know, if you got, you're sitting at a thousand, you put in money to the uh, concession stand, you know, I'm, I'm understanding that they're putting money in to improve technically our fields, which I think was part of the purpose of the ball backers too, to provide.
Absolutely, and, and the thing I hope everybody kinda understands is that's also the reason we're getting some of these tournaments here. And, and I know it doesn't bring a lot of money to town, but we have a pile of people here eating at Subway, eating at Casey's, filling up with gas, stopping a family dollar, I mean at the beginning of the season, the people that called me and asked for a schedule so they can be staffed properly, Subway every year, they wanna know baseball schedules so they can have the proper staff on nights when we have three or four games in town. So, uh, Casey's the same way, they, they always want the schedule, and the reason that ten and under tournament came here was because the place that was supposed to have the tournament, their fields weren't adequate, they didn't have air line, they didn't have, they only had lights on one field. They no longer had concession stands there that were there, so they couldn't afford the umpires on the backside of it, so. They no longer had concession stands there that were there, so they couldn't afford the umpires on the backside of it, so. There's, there's good things happening because of it also, so. Yep, and, and whatever, whatever you think, we can give prices, um, if we can get anything done in the fall, boy, it sure saves us in the, in the spring too with, with a lot of stuff going on, and I know that's a tight timeline, but we got a lot of guys that farm, and spring they're planting, so. If we can work around harvest a little bit, there's our volunteers, so.
It is a tight timeline.
It is, it absolutely is, so.
Well, should we do that, get, get some prices of stuff, and do it with Kurt or whatever, and Mike and see where, see where we're at?
Yeah, no, I'll, I'll talk to Kurt, if he can get pricing on the plumbing fixtures, um, I mean, that's, that's...
You get on to Wynn Nelson, and it's cheaper to go there than it is to Menards.
Yeah, and, and Menards is residential, and, and we really need something. But, and, and the next thing, ball backers, I, I believe, we have a meeting tomorrow night, we'll talk about it, but I'm sure we'd be at the point of putting cameras in at our expense out of that, just to, I mean, to build a building and then have to replace windows on it in six months, financially, that doesn't work for us either, so.
There'd be money lost spent on the camera, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, price of whatever, I, I'm not an expert on that, I know that security is very important, but the kind, type of security is, is totally...
It's just on the edge of town enough where them kids can get in there, make all the noise they want, they think, and, um...
More, more lights and alarms will still do a lot, but you guys make your own call.
Yep, no, I, I think, we've had a couple of good summers, I mean, just saying, this is a problem, we just noticed that, I mean, we really had this summer, last summer wasn't as bad, and a couple of years ago, we had some candy vandalism until we put the UFO lights around, so. Each step, we're learning, and I mean, obviously, this is gonna need to be alarms and something.
You mentioned lights on the concession stand, is there lights on the bathroom doors, once you keep getting kicked in?
There's lights all the way around that and stuff, it...
The, the door that got kicked in this time was the grandstand, and that's pretty dark over there, but I, I don't know.
Just wooden doors, or do you have...
No, they're, they were, they were expensive doors, Tim, they were steel.
Steel?
And they were taken out to lots and, and got car paint put on them, I mean, they were, they were nice doors, and the five of whom we started with three years, I think we got one, maybe two that are decent at this point, it, it, I don't know. All for a bag of chips and pop, I, I don't, I don't get it, but they're doing it, so.
I've still got a left over three hundred watt sodium up at the river, that's a night activated, dusted dawn, that could, that could get...
And, and we could put a night activated light right above those grandstands, I mean...
Put a big hot one over there so that they're out in the bright light for fifty yards, kind of in the building, that'll slow a lot of them down.
That's the one that blinded you for a week and a half, is that what you did?
Stop the, stop the people messing around behind the condo of the river.
I mean, yeah, just whatever, I mean, I'm...
Okay, well, I'll, I'll get prices together, so, so my thoughts on that are siding, bathroom fixtures, um, and flooring of some sort, whether it's just ceramic tile, something in those bathrooms that, I don't know, I...
Cause what's in there right now, just cement?
And we tried, um, even the garage style chipped paint that works pretty good in most garages and that, you know, slip, you know, slip and things like that, but they even, I mean, they, no vandalism, they just...
Just, just the fluctuation in temperature there is so hard on things, to go from a hundred twenty in the summer inside to however cold in the winter, I, it's just, I don't know, it's hard, so. Alright, well, I'll get together with Kurt, or I'll just get him the prices we come up with, and he can...
Right.
Get it to you, and you give us the go ahead on when we can start working. And we'll, uh, we'll get guys lined up, at least tearing stuff out, getting started this fall, so. Next spring's not such a big project, when we're trying to get fields to play ball and stuff also, so.
I think you gotta compliment or commend, would be a better word, the concession stands there, it was falling down, piece of dirt seventeen years ago when I came. So it's been sitting there, that, that concession stand's never been a, a great concession stand, so. Which is why they built the block one, I mean, you have the, you know, the modern, more modern one for the Legion Field, which is a whole different ballgame, but the other one was always just the, that's the other, the other place.
Right. But if you look at which one has the higher volume of people going through it in the summer, it's definitely the little kids, ten old, so. Yeah, alright, that sounds good, thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Alright. Number seven, discussion action on zoning board recommendation for the approval of dispatch tower for the fire hall.
I'm not really gonna say a whole lot, you already in your own mind approved a grant to the fire protection for this, uh, my concern on the zoning side was that it was placed properly, and that it met the requirements uh, for height and sturdiness, and the, what you have and what was sent to us fulfilled that completely. So my recommendation, as well as the zoning board, is to, um, pass it.
I think quite clear where it was going to be placed earlier.
It's gonna be right at the southeast corner of the fire hall.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Here's an empty spot, Brian, out there about eight by eight.
I read it several times, and I saw the height and the width, and I just couldn't figure out what it said. And does it have to have a light on, since it's a certain height?
No, no, it's not in the height requirement.
Good question though, because, uh, yeah, you do, uh, at certain levels, you need to, that is not one.
And certain times of year do you want to put it up or something? I would make the motion to approve the zoning board recommendation for the dispatch tower located at the fire station.
I'll sort it out. We have a motion of second for approval of zoning board recommendation for the new dispatch tower at the, at the fire hall, Julie?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Number eight, discussion action, donation of property three oh four West Park to the city.
This is Jim Kraus's project, pass this down, so you've got some pictures and descriptions to look at. Jim, you might wanna grab a couple of these if you wanna speak to the project. This is what I handled, this is the assessor's aerial photo, and then the cadaver map off the assessor. But that just shows you what, what they got there, everybody knows the little yellow houses and stuff. And it, you know, fills out that, that strip east of the Clondale Museum. And I believe it's Jim's intention to talk about donating all or part of that, but that's what you need to settle here. The ordinance on purchasing property is loaded with appraisals, notice, hearing, fuss, fuss, fuss. But if it's a donation, and as simple as this, and it's just gonna be a deed, I don't think we're gonna stretch our weight on all that. But you've gotta come to an agreement on what you wanna do there.
As far as...
Well, if you wanna accept it, that's, take it, take care of it.
More than half, okay.
Gotcha.
What kind of introduction, Jim, if you wanna take off with your thoughts?
Well, it's strictly a donation, um, when it first burned down, or almost burned down, it just seemed to me like that was an opportunity for the Clondale Museum to go ahead and expand. And I talked to Corrine Janovic, and they talked, brought it to the Clondale Museum. I hope it would be an addition and not just a parking lot. That's our purpose of buying it, was to donate it, at that time, I didn't realize the Clondale Museum was part of the city. I thought they had their own separate nonprofit organization, I didn't know. But anyway, nevertheless, um, I just approached Larry Babo at that time, and then I just about backed out, and I found out that he was talking to Corrine, and, but he had jack price up, because they knew it was a Clondale Museum, and anyway, talking with him, I got it bought for considerably less than what he was asking Corrine for, for the Clondale Museum. And anyway, after a while, we just, we did get it, um, the house needs to come down, of course, and I started that procedure. Um, Mike knows how that all went, and, um, anyway, so it just didn't get done, so, but I'd just like to wash my hands of it now, and let you take care of the building and bring it down, I tried, you know, we just disconnected the gas, electricity, and water, and all that sort of stuff, and Huffman at that time was, was sold his business, and I've now approached Ashaw about dismounting it. I guess, as I said, we would just suggest, and I know it's up at the Clondale Museum, probably, that they make a separate addition up there, or connected to the building, or however they wanna do it, and I think they have already met, and they're interested in doing that. And, so, no strings attached, Jan, I just wanted to donate it to the city for progress and moving forward, and hope it can be a good addition to the, to the community. This is more of a suggestion, just for the Clondale Museum people, but we would suggest the room, make, name it Lee and Janice Warner Key Room. I don't leave very much to know, in starting the Clondale Museum, and that's a, that's their decision, it's not, no strings attached. We would just like to start the hospital.
Have you promised anybody to... The others?
Yes, I mean, that, it is, it is my wish that if you decide, and obviously, this is why I brought this to the agenda, is Jim and Bruce, on the donation side, because there will be some reflection on the donation going back for Jim, price wise, so he can use it on taxes. But once we have this donation, uh, we have that building behind Bruce's building, and I mean, we're gonna go ahead and tear them down both at the same time. And we, Kurt and I've already been, we're just waiting to see if you wanna go ahead and take this, um, as a donation, and that's your call.
I'm just asking if you've got, cause I hear rumors that the new owner of Huffman's will not tear it down, and somebody told me this weekend, if the name of Metagrove that will, so, but I don't know how much he'll charge, so...
Yeah, there's a couple, and that's a, the one that you just mentioned, yes, no, we were gonna talk with Walter Ashaw, is of course the, uh, one that took over, um, uh, Huffman's, and then, then there's Brandon Wagner at Pierce, so, and then somebody did mention the Metro One too.
I wanna check too, Mike, Evan Ashaw.
What's the approximate cost of turning this down? Have we gotten any bids from anybody?
It's probably going up, it used to run three to five thousand on these little old houses, but it's hard to know now. Uh, it's just gonna have to be contact two or three and get price.
I do know that I'm working with, um, behind the scenes, Pierce County Economic Development has put in a dilapidated house program, so part of their funds, I'm going to apply for five thousand dollar rebate to come back, uh, that might cover a third of it. But that's alright, both these houses need to go, burned out shell and a fire department practice house, both need to come down, and hopefully this fall, so.
Could we, uh, contact all the demolition people and just put it out for bid?
Yeah.
So I think I'd do two of the cheapest.
Yeah, and I was, you know, the recommendation is highly, I mean, Kurt and I just had, already had this conversation, so you're, you're, uh, solidifying it, that's exactly what we wanted to do.
I think that's a good idea.
Well, from the standpoint of the council right now, there is no formality or required of an ordinance or resolution, but you should at least get on the book with a motion to accept, except the donation of the property, and as I copied the deed, if somebody's gonna make the motion or hurting it and just take it down, it's the east sixty feet, of Lot twenty, Block nine, Kimball Letters Edition. If you get on the book here with a motion to accept the donation from the Krauses, I would then prepare a deed for them to sign, and we'd probably give them back a formal receipt from the city for a donation, I imagine for the assessed value, or something like that, to make it reasonably worthwhile for a charitable deduction, do what we can anyway. Uh, and we're not gonna appraise it, and the current condition, of course, doesn't say much, but if we kicked up a receipt for the assessed value, that would give them a decent tax benefit for the effort, you know? I guess the only, the only thing I have a problem with though is the, I mean, I, not the donation, Jim, but you said that not to be used as a parking lot, I don't think the city's in the, uh, building onto the Clondale Museum, that almost has to be...
I understand that, that's more for the Clondale Museum to decide.
At the present, after it's stored down, it probably, would probably be a parking lot for some time before they, they were deciding to do something. We, we probably can't condition the, the documents, and I guess I wouldn't have it mine, too, you just know what his wishes are, and I think the Clondale Museum will try to honor it. Because... I mean, I didn't, I didn't want you to think that.
No, I understand.
I'm kidding, I'm not gonna guess that, yeah, no, alright.
I guess my thoughts are, I'd rather wait till we get the bids, in case they run across something that might cost us additional money before we accept the donated property, I'd rather see what, cause if Brian had heard that, you know, Huffman's wouldn't do it, and then somebody else wouldn't do it, is there a reason why?
Well, all I'm saying, yeah...
I was told, I mean, I didn't mix that with the twins, the one from, that's what I was told about the problem.
There is no, to just, to make it easy for you, so we don't have to sit there and quit a lot, there is no conditions, that's a perfect location to sit there and tear down, so. Uh, and I don't think we'll have any problems, the only problem we have with excavators or excavation, and Jim knows this too, is that their time is a precious commodity, and they, they go where the dollar is at the time, whether it's a farmer or not, so it's getting them on the schedule, so we've already taken that liberty to get out there and get them going, we wanna get this going.
And really, the, you know, fact of the matter is, the city's gonna have to do some of these every once in a while.
Right, right.
We're just gonna have to bite the bullet, whatever it takes.
I was just going off of Brian's comment earlier.
Yeah, we have to get, have to get as good bids as you can, but it's always gotta happen. Whereas the deal with Huffman's was they sold to Ashaw, that's why they... Yeah, they just quit. Yeah, they quit, so, it's just a timing.
Timing issue, not a main one to get in here.
I was taking that there was something else, and we wanted...
Talking to a couple of other people on other projects, Dan had told folks what he had talked that if he had committed something, he would try to get the buyers to honor him, but that's kinda like, you know, don't make a bargain, so you're gonna do the best you can.
For your information, I already did asbestos containment, Alexander was up there, I've got it written, for that, that everything, there was no asbestos in it.
And I do have that, I'm fine, I'm sorry, that was part of, asbestos was part of, yeah, you gotta have that.
So I don't know of anything else, so I was bothering up there, and I had talked with Dan, as soon as we settled on this, and he said, yeah, he would try to do it, but I had to be aware that he was settling the business, and he said he talked with Ashaw, and that's a part of it.
And I like your idea about, sorry, I like your idea about getting both of those at the same time, in the same block.
Yeah, we've been sort of...
Right.
Can they do the one with concession stand, Kraus's?
Let's not go there.
I'll make a motion that, uh, uh, accept the donation from Jim and Jan Kraus the property at three oh four West Park, as you said.
If a motion is second to accept the donation of property from Jim and Jan Kraus at three oh four West Park to the city, Julie?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Brian? Courtney, you got that actual legal, so it's one minute.
Did it all written down, is it all done?
Okay.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you, Jim, yes, yes, thank you very much.
We'll get a deed ready for you in a couple days, and I'll give you a call.
Okay.
Okay, number one, discussion action, ordinance nine forty-four, permitted hours for fireworks in city limits, amending ordinance nine fifteen.
As we had talked, I brought a copy with blanks, you can take a look here, and see if you can come to a consensus to fill in the blanks. One thing I did was I added on and between to the ordinance language, it would create some confusion when it said between these two dates is whether the day at either end was included, so eliminate that concern, I, it now says on and between this day and this day, so, pick a day that suits you, but that takes away the ambiguity anyway. And then, we had, there's a possibility of that center paragraph, an exception if you wanna make it different, if it's some odd holiday, but that gets pretty complicated, you know, if the fourth falls on a, a weekend, or the fourth falls on a Monday, or whatever, or some other holiday, there's some of that language in the, in the current stuff now. There's some of that language in the, in the current stuff now. We have, if the fourth falls on a Friday, then they should be allowed through the sixth, rather than just through the fifth. But you can say that or not, do as you please, it'd be cleaner if you just pick some dates and say that's it.
When does the state, um, start following fireworks?
Well, ours right now opened up the whole thing to what the state allows for shooting them, and that's June twenty-four to July five. And that's, that's the standard window. But then, let, their sales, I'm sorry, they regulate the sales.
Okay.
The shooting of them is up to the city, you can make it longer or shorter, whatever you wanna do.
I guess I haven't got any problem with June twenty-four to July five. That way, if you got a bad weather day on the fourth, like we did here this year, you've got an extra day.
And if, and I just think if there's even little stuff left over, just from the innocent standpoint, a kid wanna burn it up the next day, let him burn it up the next day, you know? Clean stuff up, but that's, it's your call.
I guess that's my opinion.
So, then do we need to go down to the middle one and put on the fourth of July fireworks papers? Just, do we need to-
Well, or maybe that just goes away, if you, if you don't wanna have the complication. I mean, the theory was that if it fell on a Friday, you might extend it another day. That's what it was before, that somehow came into the conversation. You don't have to.
But that would, that would cover if we made it between July twenty-fourth and July five, that would take care of that.
Yeah, but it doesn't say till Halloween at night, each night, each one of those nights.
Right, and you can certainly-
Sorry, I don't want them to be letting off till midnight, every night, for that.
No, I agree.
Yeah, you talked about shorten enough the time on certain dates, you could certainly do that. But I'm gonna, I couldn't bring you a draft that says everything possible, you can tell me what you want. If we can define it well enough, you can pass it tonight, or we can have a clean one next month. Not like we're close to the event right now.
I mean.
I think on the fourth, you'd almost have to go to midnight, yeah, midnight.
Midnight, yeah.
Then any other day between, after that. I can't see that they need to go to midnight.
On the fourth, eight AM to midnight, what you're thinking?
Yeah, I would say, the four. So, we could probably, so, the, eliminate the however.
That's first sentence.
Yeah, the extension of the date.
Yeah, we could eliminate that.
Go away, on the fourth, eight o'clock to twelve, all other days, what?
Ten to ten.
Yeah.
Seriously, ten in the morning till ten at night?
Yep.
Yeah.
People have to work, so.
Exactly. I think it's dark hell, I-
That's, that's more than late enough on any other night.
Right, and ten to ten on.
Careful, I'm older, you know.
I know, I just, I get a lot of people that say it's old.
It gets old really fast.
And the dogs work from the ground.
Right. Start on the twenty-fourth. I was a kid once, too, and enjoyed fireworks, but now I don't.
That was Jerry, I agree, ten to ten.
It really don't matter what kind you have, if you get out of complaining.
Oh, yeah.
I agree, you will, there'll be somebody that will go at twelve, ten.
Somebody will shoot, some of them will play at one o'clock afternoon, so, 'cause a lot of people work all night long, sleep all day, some work all day, try to sleep at five o'clock, so.
Speaking of that, how's the whistle coming? Hold up a separate question.
And it's not, that's not on the agenda.
Sore subject.
I thought it was ten to ten. Or do we wanna do like one to ten, go to do, or, I, I never take that into consideration, those that-
I don't have a lot of fireworks at ten o'clock in the morning.
Yeah, I would save like-
Well, back it off to one to two.
One or two.
One PM to ten PM.
Care?
Excuse me.
We can go at noon, noon's probably late enough, I mean.
Four o'clock noon?
That okay with you?
Yeah.
Or, I just, I'm still, I'm talking size over here.
Oh, yeah, well, that's up above.
That's up in the top.
No, but I mean, they can shoot off the little stuff, right? Are you talking this is mandatory, this is everything?
This, yeah.
All inclusive.
Simple is good.
Yep.
And despite the fact that the state law stuff still talks about these seven, eight dents, firecrackers and stuff, as you well know.
They're not, they don't even sell-
There's bigger stuff than that showing up these days.
They don't even sell seven eights anymore.
Canned shells that would go through the side of the tank and blow the lid off it. Okay, so, June twenty-fourth to July five, on the fourth, eight AM to twelve midnight, all other days, twelve noon to ten PM.
Yes, sir.
Clear enough?
That's awesome.
Everybody good with that?
I just, I'm good with the rest.
Did you have a question?
You're, you're talking about these little chickens that the kids do and the little snakes, and you're talking absolutely nothing, it'd be then till noon, right?
A lot of these kids don't even get out of bed till noon.
That's fine.
I had to do with fireworks, my-
My kid's four, I'll just say wait till noon.
I mean, he's, he'd be up at seven thirty doing catkins.
That's not a firework. I don't know, you better ask the city attorney, I don't ask me that, I don't know.
Bruce, since we're going to the fifth, say we got rained out on the fourth, do we need to clarify that twelve o'clock on the fifth, too?
Up to you, say whatever you want. I mean, we had, you know, the possibility of rained out on the fourth year or this year, that happened to a lot of people.
They can look at the forecast to see if it's gonna be raining or storming, the chances of rain.
The, the business of somebody still going back to work and still trying to get to sleep and stuff doesn't change just because it rained on the fourth.
Right.
But whatever you guys wanna, right now.
I'm good with twelve to ten, all three days.
It's, they had their chance, they either go out in the rain or they can-
Yeah, most people have to go to work on the fifth, anyway, I mean, everybody gets the fourth, or most people. Gets the fourth off, but people gotta get up.
I guess for me, you've got a whole week ahead of that to light fireworks off.
Exactly.
Yeah.
It's not like I'm only giving you the fourth, forgetting you can have-
Yeah, you know, if the forecast is bad for the fourth, shut them off on the third.
Agreed, I'm good with that.
This is good.
Anybody else agree with it?
Yeah, this, well, if you're real seen with that, we can do the reprint, it can be cleaned, and just pass it as an ordinance tonight, but if you wanna clean one printed for next month, we do that with it, whatever you want it to.
Just get it down tonight, let's make sure this is agenda.
You want it.
I'll make a motion to amend ordinance nine forty-four.
Nine fifteen.
Nine fifteen, thank you. Now, between, um, to have it between June twenty-fourth and July fifteenth every year, and on the fourth of July, between the hours of eight AM and midnight, or twelve o'clock AM. And on other, all other days, um, fireworks shall be limited to twelve PM till ten PM.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. We have a motion and a second for, to amend ordinance nine fifteen.
Pass ordinance nine fifteen. Code section is something else, but it's her, Courtney's number is nine fifteen, right?
That's the old one.
That's the old one, nine forty-four is the new one.
Nine fifteen zero.
We're just passing nine forty-four.
Okay, so, I'm sorry.
No, you just, we just, you just made a motion to amend nine fifteen.
Well, which is the same thing.
It's the same thing.
Okay.
It's a need on the same, so it's nine forty-four.
Strictly speaking, we're passing your new ordinance, nine forty-four, it amends the code section. The old ordinance had its own number.
With the following amendments, the, um, fireworks from June twenty-fourth to July fifth, um, times eight AM to midnight on the fourth, all other days, twelve PM to ten PM. Julie?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Brian?
Nate?
Motion carries.
I just wanted to do that once, can I still look, or, or the level here? But then I will make the motion to waive the second and third readings and approve as presented.
Yes, sir.
We have a motion and a second to waive the second and third readings and approve as presented.
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Aye.
And discussion action on utility service protection plan for water and sewer.
I'm gonna have Kurt, what do you have this?
Yep.
I'm gonna have Kurt address this a little bit. I do not want this to be, for any practical purposes, a drawn out discussion tonight. This is to prompt something that we've talked about before with the, um, basically the liability and the responsibility of the homeowner versus, uh, the city, and sometimes the, um, extended use or abuse of the city in this regard. So, Kurt, you wanted to just address kinda what the concerns were, because you're really getting to the technical part of the service line to the main.
Yeah, right now it's got up to, you know, where we go to the curb stop and I'd like to change that, so. It'd be like the sewer, so they'd be liable to clear up to the main. And we did, uh, Kelly Mallers out there the other day. We ended up putting a new line in, put it through the main, and they put a new line in to the house 'cause it's old gal, the night is a joke. But now we gotta replace the sidewalk and all that stuff. I mean, this is, it's kind of a headache for us, but, I mean, the sewer, they, I mean, the homeowner go there, does it all. They take, take care of it all. Right now, the city paid, or the city charges the homeowner for all the supplies plus fifteen? Fifteen, ten? The only thing they gain on it is the labor's rate, so, I mean, it's-
Kurt, where will you replace the sidewalk in our space?
It's curb stop, right in the sidewalk.
But I would say the curb stop should be on the other side of the sidewalk.
Mine's in my side.
That's what you would say.
We gotta, it's in the sidewalk, we gotta-
Think about what you're saying, sidewalk, can he just-
To the street. We gotta put new sidewalk into the street now.
One of the discussions that was also had, that I, I did some research on and cannot find even from an insurance side, any problems with that, but we could look at a, almost like a cap plan, like GAST does, and charge the homeowners, uh, X amount per month to basically be under that, and the city would continue to service regardless, and that gray area would kinda go away and the city would just do it, but you're paying on a cap plan, say twenty bucks a month. Or you can even do it on the rate, if you're getting charged twelve bucks a month on the water and you get charged twenty bucks, but you're covered under that, so that if you have any issues that are around not only the curb stop in that gray area, you know, the city will just simply take care of it. And if it has to be the service, you know, that, that's different, that goes to the plumber and whatever the case may be, but, um, just food for thought, really don't eat anything done, but I'd like to bring it back after you guys having this and just kinda going over it and getting more clarity. So, that's what we brought it tonight for. Does that make sense of what you were talking about, the cap? I mean, we're talking mainly around the curb stop area.
Pardon me?
The cap kinda plan, where we're just gonna go ahead and do it, but it'll be for those and then those that aren't on a cap plan.
Yeah, they'll-
Like anybody else, then it becomes that, uh, no, because we get into this argumentative, argumentative side of things with someone saying, well, that's not my responsibility. And unfortunately, we have plumbers out there in the area, not necessarily plenty of you, but area, that will say, oh, that's not your responsibility, that's the city's. And then Kurt has to say, no, that's your responsibility, and then you get this kinda-
Recognize, I think for what it's worth, the business of the city will do the tap and bring it to the curb, curb stop, was to keep Joe Plummer from God knows where from messing with the city main.
Agreed.
I, I don't disagree with that. We have to do an inspection on that, so.
Yeah, well, but if they screw it up, what are you gonna do? I mean, uh, if the city people do the tap.
We could screw it up, too.
Sure, but then we know it's the city's contractors that have that equipment, though, wouldn't it? General contractor.
I don't know, general contractors have that equipment to pull in the mains, tap in.
Yeah, Hoffman, Tommy on North Fork, uh-
Tangement?
Hansman, he does, and, uh, Morale.
Morale, yeah.
So, where, if you have the hopeful guy do it, where's your curb stop gonna be?
Well, I think this is where we're bringing in the cap.
'Cause remember, I had that argument the last time we did this, if I'm paying for it, I'm putting my shut off in the house, how are you gonna shut my water off?
He did have that argument the last time.
Well, the reason the city owns the curb stop is the city can control the curb stop.
Well, if I'm paying, if I'm paying for the main-
He's saying, he's paying for the main, including the curb stop.
And that's all my expense, I'm putting that curb stop in my house. If I'm paying for it, Bruce, it's going in my house, the shut off, which ain't practical.
We wouldn't call it a curb stop there, okay?
No, but I'm not in the house. But see what I'm saying?
That's why it is how it is out there.
How?
So, the city can control it.
Yeah, how are they gonna shut me off if I don't pay my bill?
Oh, okay, for, this is what I, but I, what I want you to, what I want you to do is just sit there and look at it, and there is a concern, Raleigh had the concern, Kurt's has the concern, because things are changing. Yes, that is the way it's supposed to be, but people are becoming, uh, a little more sensitive on this, what's their liability and what's not their liability, and we're just trying to ease that somewhat, somehow. Either with a cap plan to say we're gonna take care of it, all of it, all of there, but, but, that's it. Just think about it, like I said, we'll re-bring it up and that, but if you get, like I said, that was a good argument to come back with, but.
I just don't know if you put another twenty dollars on somebody's bill, they had a hard time with an extra two dollars for trash totes. You know, just, so three, I'm just saying.
I'm still-
We're gonna get a lot of feedback on that.
Yeah, and, and honestly, Julie, I know this is a side note, and I'll bring it up there. That's unfortunate, because basically plenty became the laughing stock of the entire area on this three dollar increase on totes, because it was not, people don't understand how we ever survived without it. I mean, they think that fifteen is still too cheap, if you've been anywhere else, and, and it, it's, it was, but I'm, it's beside the subject. And let's, but, but I understand what you're saying.
But those who are on a fixed income, you know, if, you know, you do do the cap, it'll cause some heat.
Kurt, what did they run into their house at, plastic or?
Copper.
They run copper, yeah?
Well, we do, but then from the curb stop, they can do whatever they want.
So, your tap off the main is copper to the curb stop?
Yeah, it's always.
The main and the curb stop are copper.
So, right now, you guys have-
Still trying to locate copper, you can't locate plastic unless you have trace, in which now we've got the trace wire.
Which we did have that put in, remember, Mike?
Yeah, I remember that, I remember that, yeah.
We got the trace wire in here, that's why I was wondering if they put in plastic, they supposedly sort of put the trace wire in.
Yeah, you got to.
Yeah.
Should go to Whitney.
Go ahead, George, did you have a, any words?
I'm reading it right now.
Oh, you're, okay, that's, you're answering then your own question right there.
I'm reading my own.
Well, if you're gonna talk about this more, you all need to read that three one oh five. There's a lot of stuff that they're asking you change, if you're gonna change that plan, about responsibility and inspections and permit and this and that. And if you pollute the city water system and we have to shut down for ten days because of E. coli, you're responsible for twenty thousand dollars in damages. You probably should say something like that.
Isn't that eventually what happened out that way with the restroom, and, uh, shut the whole, whole new water supply down?
I would just be concerned about just anybody screwing holes in municipal water main that's running all over. But I guess you make whatever requirements you want.
I say, we all redo this and we're good that next month.
So, we table on this for next meeting or something, till we- Should we table on this for next meeting or something till we can all...
Yeah, you don't even have to table, just, just...
Move on?
Move on.
Okay. Uh, number eleven, discussion on budget fiscal year eighteen nineteen.
All right, I'll just, uh, take care of, um, everything here and we can kind of just wrap it up. Uh, I think first thing we need to know in discussion on budget fiscal year two thousand eighteen nineteen, I need from you probably about three workshops. I can probably do it in two, but one of them's gonna be longer. You know, so, but I'm looking at the workshops on the twenty first, twenty eighth, and the fourth. You might have, uh, obviously the next one, what? That was gonna be the short one. Oh, yeah, not the hearing part, no, just on the workshop, I didn't catch it, thank you, thank you. But I do want the twenty first, yes.
Twenty first, twenty eighth, and what else?
Twenty first, twenty eighth, and the fourth.
And next?
That's the next three Tuesdays.
And then the Tuesday after that's already...
Yeah, this is, fortunately, this is why you get the big bucks, uh, is August rolls around, this is budget time, so, um, if, and I could maybe do it in two, uh, the twenty first will be a, basically, an awareness to get you into the two thousand eighteen nineteen budget. If that works, twenty first is probably one of my more important ones. And probably not be two hours, I just need a good hour.
I can make all those, I don't see any reason why I can't.
Twenty one.
The next Tuesday.
Yeah, I should be able to make that.
That's the Tuesday after Tuesday.
I don't know if I'd be able to make the fourth. But the twenty first and twenty eighth. I can change the date, I just wrote...
Oh, yeah, we just, we're looking at Tuesdays, if you want to change it to another day...
Twenty first and twenty eighth are, are good for me.
Yeah, for me as well.
There's a chance, to be honest, I...
What time though?
That's up to you.
Two thirty, I mean, I was gonna do that.
That doesn't matter for me.
Can you, can you, can you get there by five thirty?
I, not that day, I have meetings that day. I won't be done till... Yeah, six with work.
Six with work and I had you out by seven. I believe fire department have a, uh, training, that's your end of the month.
Just one hour on the twenty first, do you?
Just one hour on the twenty first. You're gonna get your packet material, you're gonna get some of the things. Right, and that's the next part, we can just get into that real quick so we can move along in the meeting. Uh, two things have to happen on the budget for this year, uh, something new for me, although it seems to be pretty straightforward. I need to, on the twenty eighth, if that's permissible and I'm planning on the twenty eighth as well, to do a, uh, public hearing to amend the two thousand seventeen eighteen budget, bringing it back in line. We had a unused restricted authority or surplus of right around nine hundred thousand dollars. So that is a little bit contrary to what you heard from your auditor, and I know you're gonna, but I'm working with the same auditor, but you have, uh, that amount, we're gonna transfer, for the first year, we're gonna transfer in a nutshell, five hundred or half a million dollars back into the general to go ahead and offset those book losses. That has to be a public hearing, an amendment to the budget, and I'm looking to do that on the twenty eighth. And I believe there's also a resolution that I'll give to Bruce from the auditors that needs to be passed. What's that?
Your transfer from general to utilities.
Yes, I'm, I'm sorry, I said that backwards, general to utilities, because that's where it stood. And then the utilities, basically, you're gonna see on the amendment, uh, money going back and forth. But it will clear up the two thousand seventeen eighteen budget to at least satisfy the auditors. The money was always there, it's just in the wrong spot, and that was caused by a previous auditor saying that's where you could keep it, and he was probably wrong, and I'm, I'm agreeing with our auditor that we have to use. That's one step of it. The main step that we'll be looking at is the two thousand eighteen nineteen budget, which will, I'll be looking at, um, several of the issues, not only including health insurance, salary, labor costs, as well as the electrical utilities. Which leads me to, if we're okay on that, uh, do you wanna set August twenty eighth right now for the same time or earlier?
Um, around six, yeah.
Okay, I mean, it's, it's...
Will there be anything going?
Yeah, my goal on each one of those was to keep the time limit so that you don't get yourself...
Two hours is gonna be enough before you have to go?
Oh, it'll be plenty, because I gotta space it out there. Things will be coming in this first one, I may not even have the, uh, valuation. I mean, I probably won't get that till the twentieth, so we're right on top of it. So there's things that are coming to me from the county that I have to include into the budget, and I won't know that till the August twentieth. So the twenty first might be just the overview and get going. Twenty eighth will have the hearing for the amendment to the budget, plus the workshop for the eighteen nineteen budget. And then September fourth may not have to happen, so if you're worried about a holiday or changing a date, that would be the one, we could wait, maybe look at the twenty eighth and see where everybody's at and how much we get accomplished. So, uh, the next part, I mean, of the city report is I wanted to let you be aware of where we're at with the electrical utilities. We had a committee meeting, Tom was there, uh, Mike, I'm sorry I bothered you at the funeral.
That's all right.
That's, uh, but, uh, we had a very good meeting, Bruce has been through, uh, the parts of the contract that needed work that he talked to you about last month. And we've also been through a couple of other parts when it comes to the financial side, so we can understand where we need to be as well, that'll go into the eighteen nineteen budget. Um, and I'll bring that back on the next one. I did have a conversation today with Kyle, who is with our auditor, and the amount needed to sustain is roughly, it's between two hundred and two hundred and fifty, and we're working it out. I just had this conversation at three o'clock this afternoon with Kyle. What that means, if you look at fourteen point five percent on a lease payment from the utility, that's right at two hundred thousand. Comfort level will be somewhere in there, I need to reduce some costs on the electrical. But what came out of that is, uh, the way the rates and the way the money, it will flow and it will work, and we will do everything that we've been actually working at for twelve months on this electrical utility. So with that in mind, I'm at a spot, and I told the group, that I'm comfortable with proceeding forward to recommend to go that direction. With that being said, I'm also very aware, very aware, that we need to begin the public education process. So the first step is, is tonight, to let you know this committee has been meeting, and we've been working on it, as well as the city attorney and that, to look at the language in the contract and to do the things that needed to be done right, step by step. We're there, so I'd like to put that out and have a town hall and do it all the time, not all the time, but consistently through now until September eleventh, and bring it at the September eleventh meeting for a recommendation. So even starting this week, you know, so, it actually started tonight. So I don't know if you have any questions you wanna ask, Tom in particular was there, Mike, you've been there, Bruce, if there's anything you wanna add, but I wanna make sure that there's a lot of clarity in this picture. I know it will work financially for the city. Because we were actually putting a lot of surplus monies from the electrical utilities. We might have been making one point five, but we were also spending about one point three. So that's for that two hundred thousand dollar gap, and we've had to lower our general expenses, put more expenses onto the other utilities, and they can sustain it right now. But this will turn, not only working with the utilities, but on the budget, will turn our general where the auditors want it and start building up that unrestricted cash reserve. So my comfort level is there, and, and, you know, except short of going to the meetings in the budget and showing you in, in writing where we need to be. This is my informative time just to let you know where I stand, so...
And we should get, for everybody, this final draft of the agreements out now. I mean, when I brought up that business of that one indemnity clause that they had in their contract proposal a month ago, Mike brought it up to, what's his name again?
Keith.
Keith. And even before I wrote the formal letter in which I said that has got to go, Keith had already agreed it could go. And I don't know quite where it came from, their lawyer in Lincoln, I think, stuck that in there. They had the most god awful clause in there that said, if anything goes wrong and the NCPPD is responsible for anything, the city will reimburse them, no matter what they do, virtually. And we said that had to go away, and it did go away. And they've made some other tweaks and, and you need to read through the thing too, so you're fully aware of what's there, but, but it's workable. I mean, the, the real question, policy question for you guys then is the sensibility of doing this and having them do the maintenance. They've been here, they're seeming to work with everybody, you'll have to talk with everybody and be sure you're in agreement with that. And then they've, they've got some vague plans that they're willing to talk about, but not right now, about what they're gonna do in the next year or so. Real early in the game, I think, you'll hear that they intend to go with all automatic meters, so that they'll have the shut off capability and they can read everything remotely. They're gonna come in and do a tremendous tree trimming and basic maintenance plan. They don't wanna, you know, put all that in hard, fast, deadline writing and put it in the paper, but they're gonna be responsible for the system, they're gonna get everything up to snuff in the next couple of years and really go after it, which has, or saves the city a huge expense if you undertook to do that on your own. So all in all, I think it's a pretty good package, but you do need to make sure it sells. And they've got a fancy rate study, and they're gonna rejuggle all the rates and, they can talk about that. They're actually planning, I think, to cut basic residential homeowners a little break, at least for a while, and re-evaluate the commercial, and, I mean, it'll tweak the rates, and some will do better and some will do worse, but, but they're trying to make their rates a little more uniform throughout all of their system. And they don't want a lot of strange cut rate stuff for electric heat here and not there and so on. Apparently, by their definition, the cut rate for electric heat stuff has pretty much gone away. Uh, that's not an industry acceptable plan anymore, it used to be, but it's not now.
Well, not in this area, it's not even feasible.
Yeah, it just doesn't work for them, and they think it's nuts, they think that's gotta go away. I asked them, because I've got a, a double meter over here on this old, my storage building back there, and I think they're gonna get rid of the double meters and just put single meters on and just bridge stuff together and say, now you have electricity, you know, instead of eight meter and other meter.
So when did they think they'd have the rates then?
Well, they have a rate study done, and they, we can have that available for the council to see and so on.
Okay, right here.
It's, it's quite complex, and to, you know, for any one property owner, you've gotta work through it letter in verse, and it's not exactly easy, and it's all computerized, but...
This is the actual version, and it's for, the, the actual version, which I've been through every single page, and I'm not trying to, um, this is what I get paid to do, is four hundred and fifty nine pages. You're more than welcome to go through each of the one of the four hundred and fifty nine pages. But as far as the rates go, uh, Bruce is right, it is very complex, uh, it is taking into account, one of the issues, and like I said, twelve months I've been working on this, one of the issues I had a concern with was the commercial buildings that we have. So I had them put a special rate in for the commercial buildings that we have, that we currently, because if we don't, if we didn't change that or don't change that, we would have been stuck with probably an extra sixty five thousand that was unnecessary on top of it. They were able to cut that in half, because we're still gonna have to pay for that.
By we, you mean, uh, just so they understand, the city buying the electricity.
The city has to purchase...
City paying the electricity bill for the buildings that they own.
Which, so we have a new class, we have a new classification that actually went in, and it's called municipal buildings. You know, and that's, and that'll help, uh, it's still a cost, but, you know, I've allocated that cost into the, the budget, because you'll still have an electric plant budget. How much is in that electric plant budget is, uh, you know, still has yet to be determined, because that's what, where that two hundred and fifty thousand, you know, give or take a little bit, is being considered. And that would be the lease payment, you know, but like I said, you take away, um, just tremendous amount of cost too. I mean, just, that's, that's the one thing, if we have a big year, which is one thing that nobody ever talks about, but, you know, it's so cyclical based on weather, um, our lease payment, if it's based on one point two million, is gonna be less than if we had a one point five million dollar year, which we are on pace right now to have a, say, one point four or five million dollar year. So what would that be in actual numbers on the lease? It'll be anywhere between two hundred and two hundred and fifty thousand. You know, and that's what we're, we're kinda looking at, so. Auditor leans toward more toward the heavy, I'm trying to, I told him, I'm trying to lean toward the realistic. I don't want a lot of the rates to change, I mean, you look at residential, uh, residential goes down nine percent. So if you're a homeowner and you live in Plainview and you want, you know, to something to go forward, anyone that comes out and complains and says my rates will go up, guess what? You're probably not arguing a good argument, because your rates will probably go down.
Well, and I think that's what the public needs to hear, is, okay, based on what I'm paying right now, if we enter into this agreement, how are my rates going to change? That, they need to see the realistic, um, what their rates are gonna be.
Yeah, may be able to work up three or four examples, you know, you're really gonna be hard pressed if you're trying to answer that specific question.
Right, to everybody, right, but just a generalization, is it gonna go up five percent, is it gonna go down?
We could ask them to, and they've got the stuff.
I mean, it's, and it's part of the design, and like I said, and of course, you're gonna hear the argument that that's all theoretical, well, all of this is, that's why we're gonna revisit it on a regular basis, and they built that in, and Bruce helped with that contract language as well, is that they built it in where we have a two month turnaround on a, um, the amount of lease. So if we see it's not matching, and, you know, the homeowners are just getting this bargain deal and they're, they're only paying, I guarantee you they'll still complain about electric, no matter what. But say if they're getting a, a deal on this bargain, and we see that we're not making enough money, we can turn that around and up the rates. Which we, we might need to, we don't know what it's gonna look like.
The lease, the lease fee the city will have, and I'll explain all this if we wanna go through their contract, but the lease fee the city has the right to change it in sixty days' notice. Really, all they do is they just punch it into their bill, lease fee on top of the bill, it's gonna show up to the consumer, but the lease fee that comes to the city, uh, is changeable, so if we do miss and the budget is high, low, or indifferent, suffering, it can be changed on sixty days' notice. The, the rates themselves, they reserve the right, once you're into this, to set these rates as what they gotta have, you know, it's the same thing they do with people out in the country, this is what it's gonna take. They don't even do the rate study themselves, they hire a national outfit that's in the business, and he did all that stuff. He gives it to them, they haven't even really tweaked it much, I don't think, they, they take what he gives them.
I mean, I tell you, the one that probably worked the most, I mean, I'll give credit where credit's due, is Melissa. I mean, as the utility clerk, she had to come constantly give different rates from different individuals to see how it would fit in, and, uh, yeah, like I said, it's a four hundred and fifty nine page, well with graphs and everything, and, um, it works.
That's like, we need to have some scenarios for people.
Yeah, that's right, you gotta have some real examples of what they're gonna be, because otherwise it's all just smoke and mirrors, and nobody's gonna believe it's gonna work.
Right, but you also need to disclose to them, you know, that at sixty days, they could be changing, based off of, I mean, I think that needs to be disclosed.
Well, uh, hold on, make sure, Mike, Mike went, uh, two sides of the story there.
Correct.
The sixty day thing is the city's ability to change the lease payment rate.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
The other rates, once they're in place, that's NCPPD.
Okay, okay, thank you for pointing out, because I was under that impression.
And they'll talk to us, but it's not gonna happen real easy.
And I believe they looked at this, and they're gonna look at it several times, but they tried to lock this in with these people, and try to do things as they do things, on like almost two years, and then they'll re-evaluate where they're at. So there's not a whole lot of change that's gonna happen, uh, to the rates, and, and one thing that's gotta be very clear, Bruce made it clear, was that there are gonna be losers in this game, if you wanna call it... if you wanna call it, and I don't know who they are, but if you're a commercial and you're trying to run all electric in your building, you might not be in a very good shape.
Oh, that remains to be seen, but we could ask that question.
Susan, yes, sir.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with Julie about people aren't gonna be concerned about their rates, but as far as services go, a lot of people are used to paying for their electric bill in town, does that still occur? Or does all billing and payment then go through NCPPD?
All billing goes through NCPPD.
They'll do the billing.
So there's no more, you can't go to the city office to figure it out?
You'll pay trash waters or, yeah.
So, we'll still have our monthly bills, so just we won't.
No electric.
Are you losing an employee then?
Possibly.
Possibly.
I reserve the right to wait till budget.
I just, that's just my curiosity, I don't live in town, so it doesn't affect me, I just, but that's great, because people don't wanna know if they can still drop off.
And the other thing about timing, I think the current plan is the second quarter of nineteen, right? They didn't want, even if this all is done in the next month or two, they won't try to implement it until.
It's a two and a half month transition.
Second quarter of nineteen. They've got a huge adjustment of some kind happened right around the first of year, they're only willing to do it on a quarter. And they don't wanna do it in January because they got a bunch of other stuff going. So they would defer Plainview's changes to first of March or something like that.
But we could already have that approved, right?
Yeah, well, they won't even start the process until this gets passed and you sign the agreement. If that all happens, then they'll start working on it, but they won't implement it. And I think until the first of March, we'll have to talk to them about that.
And then, I, I actually thought, Tom, I thought it was the first of January was the time they would have to do it, but you could be right, Bruce, I mean, it could be first of March.
Well, I don't think they wanted to mess around with the first, I don't think they wanted to mess around after the first, did they?
Yeah, they wanted, it would have to be, they're just not on the first.
Well, when I brought it up, their bookkeeper guy that was sitting over here, well, he was, he about had a stroke, because they got stuff to go in in December that's huge and they couldn't possibly do it at the first of the year or something. But you can ask, yeah. Okay, well, I mean, Mike's gotta get the plan and the meeting and whatever you guys wanna do to get the information and sell this, because it's gonna be sold.
Bruce, the only other question I have for you is, if I remember right, did they want like a, and I'm sure you discussed them, did they want like a five year advance notice of an out?
They did, we've pushed on that quite a bit. And what the thing comes to right now is ten year fixed and then a five year notice of out. So, it's, I mean, you just gotta bite that bullet, if that's what it's gonna be. And that's, they, I, I essentially told them, well, that's the same as nothing then, because a five year out is just a fifteen year contract. And it is.
Yeah, they did.
But they've got, you know, and just like in the old days of signing up with all these different power suppliers and signing up with me, all of those people deal on a fifteen, twenty, thirty year window. They sell bonds, they deal with huge financing issues, they gotta have some certainty out here, so. If we're gonna work with them, I think it has to be on that basis.
So Mike, then, since I'm a second meeting, I'm, I'm, Mike Mean and those, will they take over that part of it? Are we still, we're still obligated to our contract?
Yeah, we, in fact.
They'll deal with them, we sign them.
Yeah, yeah, they, well, the bottom line, and Bruce will tell you this, because there's legal language there, I think the easiest way to explain this is that when this is all done, you will work with NCPPD first. Sign the pro agreement to work with them, that's what'll be presented on the eleventh of September, after we have all these town hall and all this kinda meetings to go forward. If you choose to go that way, the next step is to sign in and get in the contracts with Mean Power and WAPA, who have already agreed with this type of arrangement. They got some strange language in there, things that Bruce was looking at, but the WAPA and Mean contracts are, are ready to go. So they're waiting for this to happen and then, then there's gonna be no issue after that.
Essentially, they become the agent for the city to deal with WAPA and deal with Mean and they'll do all that stirring. And just, they don't say they're buying the power, they say Plainview's buying the power, but we're the agent to handle it. And because of our contract with Mean is Plainview's buying power from Mean. And they don't wanna change it to say they're buying power from Mean, and I don't think Mean wants to do that either. But, but they'll handle all of that financial juggling.
One of the nice things that was structured into the pro agreement that was added, and I, I saw it and saw the verbescence of that, the fact that their reporting mechanisms, they will report based upon our old knowledge, that we will know each month, obviously, where that gross revenue and expenditures and it's going out. I, I think it's on a every thirty day basis, so, but their reporting was pretty, pretty straightforward and was a, a nice addition that they put in, so. Instead of one quarterly or half a year and then, or yearly to see what, how we really panned out.
And I guess one other thing that was maybe important, they've, they've varied on this, but I think they're back to the position that pretty certainly Plainview City Limits will get a board seat. So they'll have to expand their board and reallocate their voting mechanisms inside NCPPD. But Plainview will carry a big enough percentage of the operation that it almost guarantees a district and a board seat. It might not be exactly contiguous to the city limits, but pretty close. So we at least have a pretty strong voice in talking to them about the overall rates and stuff like that. Well, they'll, they'll have that presentation, I mean, you all need to hear it, the agreement.
There was a slight argument discrepancy on, as far as, there was a point when they didn't know if the power review board was even gonna allow a seat. Not a big deal, but this is that roller coaster going back and forth, because they said, well, you'll get a seat, now you won't get a seat, they should get a seat. Now it is determined that regardless of what happens, a seat's guaranteed and there's even a chance for a partial or a second seat. You know, that's, I mean, that's, that is way out of our hands. I mean, that's, that's belonging to the power review board and the jurisdiction and the sectioning out, so, but we're guaranteed with our population to have a seat.
Are you gonna try and pick dates, I guess that's your move ahead plan here, or is there a plan, you're doing all your budget meetings right at the same time?
Yeah.
And squeeze it in some public meeting.
Yeah, the public hearing, they're not public hearing, the public meetings. Just be aware that obviously, if you're there and with, you know, a town, if anyone, probably should, but not as a full council, I mean, I'm probably not gonna make it that kind of, unless you tell me to, but you could, you could overwhelm yourself here in the next two, three weeks. Otherwise, I'm just gonna have a town hall meeting here and those that are invited and probably we talked about putting out Facebook Live, let the social media have and then, you know, and go for it.
It wouldn't be a bad thing to notice each one of the city council meeting, I mean, with attendance optional or something like that, but if you all show up and start talking about policy, we're in trouble if you haven't noticed the city council meeting.
You're right about that, I guess it wasn't going that direction.
It's a big enough deal, they might all show up sometime.
Sure.
Look through the door, yep, there he is.
Yeah.
Not right, Mike.
Are you talking about having a public hearings strictly for that issue, the, the PPD agreement?
Just, and, and more of on the town hall format rather than.
Informational.
Yeah, it wouldn't exactly, it won't be a public hearing, but you got, I know what you mean.
And they'll have representatives from north central. I requested that and they agreed that they, they would come and they would be able to explain it to best.
Informationally, yeah.
When you say that the, the rates are gonna go down, you're not talking about their overall bill, you're just talking about their base electric rate, aren't you?
Yep. You're talking about for residential, I mean.
Yeah, yeah, I just, I would say be careful about that, because they're gonna expect.
Well, they'll, they'll speak, they'll speak to that, but they, their general pitch right now is residential rates are likely to be down in the first run.
But I don't, that doesn't.
They're gonna, they're gonna adjust stuff every year and keep fiddling and, yeah, they'll, they'll be a little cautious.
I would just make sure when you say that, to put it in context, that your base electrical rate's gonna be lower, but your overall bill is probably.
They're all gonna be adjusted.
The parent tax fee.
Well, basically, as same as understood, Mike, if the residential rates go down by nine percent and we're gonna charge fourteen or fifteen percent, they're gonna have about a five percent increase on their bill.
Yeah, and that, that'd be the best way to phrase it, I would say, I would say.
Based on that amount.
I would just say, hey, your, your, your rate's gonna go down, because they're gonna expect a cheaper bill, when you say that.
So I mean, basically, the residential, if you put it that way, unless I'm wrong in saying that, it would be a five percent increase over the, you're getting five percent, some of them are gonna be fourteen and a half.
It, it's hard to say.
That's why we need some examples, because we haven't been able to get hard numbers, for example, because we haven't settled on the fourteen percent.
Right.
And they've never run that through their system, we gotta get that done.
I think it's hard to say, because, you know, you, you can't look at it, I mean, there's, it is so complex, that even the system, when it sits there and measures, you gotta allocate winter rates to summer rates. You gotta allocate a thousand kilowatts to two thousand kilowatts, two thousand to five thousand kilowatts, five thousand and higher. So if you're a little old lady or man, you're correct, and you use less than a thousand kilowatts and it's in the summer and it's based upon the nine percent decrease, even with the lease payment, you might see a reduction. But if you are a commercial, all electric, and you are looking at something based upon ten thousand kilowatts or more and getting a break on the Plainview rates, you might now see you're not getting quite that break and it may end up being like a twenty percent.
That's why we need some hard examples, right? Well, calculated out.
Right.
Not just you may and you may and you may.
Right.
People won't sit for that very long.
Like a family of five, you know, a, a single, you know, or a couple, I just.
It, it will be difficult, yes, I can do it, I will pull it out, I'll pull it out a home or two.
Well, either that or you just ask them, I think they could run it, you know. What if we got this homeowner, what's the bill gonna be? What if we got this property, what's the bill gonna be?
Basically, wouldn't, like, you have to base it off of, okay, I use three hundred kilowatts, that's the examples I would usually be by kilowatts. You can't say what a family's gonna use month to month, you'd have to say, here's an average, Courtney uses three hundred and fifty kilowatts.
Right, I was just gonna say, just pick a couple of different scenarios from people's current.
Kilowatt.
Yeah.
Which, I, I, I've been agreeing, I'm not arguing what I'm saying, but remember that even with three hundred kilowatts, there's nine different classifications that use three hundred kilowatts. You know, and probably another twenty in classifications within that.
Still gonna have to define.
Right.
Property, you can pick out a half thousand bill.
So, if I'm hearing this right, it's, it's basically a town hall meeting that will be led by the power company representatives, correct?
No, I, I would argue that, no.
So it's not.
This is our meeting, the power, the power company people will come to answer some questions, but this is still the city of Plainview's meeting.
Are we gonna have like PowerPoint presentation with the eleventh?
The eleventh will be the actual, bringing it back to our meeting here, but I'm gonna need to have, I, I would say at least twice, between now and the eleventh, including starting this discussion tonight.
Are you, are they gonna use like PowerPoint technology to explain all this? Which would have a lot of information being given to people.
Yeah, but I, I gotta, I will probably, I'm, I'm sorry that, you know, that, that some people, but I'm gonna, you're gonna have to dumb it down. I don't wanna be that way, but I, there's no way in God's creation, you're gonna ever explain the complexity of what's going on. So I have to take it to the least level, like you were talking about, Eric, to what does this mean? And I think the only way you can do that is maybe have them take one residence.
Example.
One example, because if you try to sit there and say, well, how is her place and my place different? Well, they shouldn't be, but I guarantee you they are, because she's gonna get charged a different rate than I am based upon the number of kilowatts that's going through the house, unless she's lighting up the place every night and using more than ten thousand.
But when, when you get the rates, if you just say, now here is the numbers off a bill for a family of five in Plainview for last year, and nobody gets names and nobody knows whose bill it is, this is how it'll change.
Yeah, I can do that.
And, you know, that can work.
For example.
Yeah, if you, if you do anything other than that.
I would just say that's fictitious. I would just tell people it's completely fictitious.
Mr. John Smith.
Somebody's gonna try to figure it out.
Right here.
No, but I, I agree.
You can start with the Calvin Flucki residence, where everything has to be turned off at nine o'clock at night and you don't use too much electricity.
I'm sure we'll get a new lawyer.
And it'll absolutely just dilute the whole rates.
Unless the motion detectors come on.
Uh, date wise, is there anything to think of, just to continue the first show tonight? With all this being said, I do need to inform you I will be gone from the twenty second through the twenty sixth. You know, I'll be here on the twenty first, but I'm gonna fly to Atlanta. I'm doing some, some of my work on my PhD down in Atlanta, so. I'll be back then, I'm, you know, so you can set the dates, I'll also probably be going on Wednesday of the twenty ninth, otherwise I'm here.
I would say you just set it about on the.
I would say you pick and make, make it or not make it, just, I'm gonna be gone sometime in September myself.
So do it, you know, and just kinda set it up, because I had thought about even setting up the initial one relatively soon, you know.
Yeah.
I mean, two or three days.
It's hard to decide if you say I can be here this day or that day.
Well, I can first say that rebranding meeting, the, the final one for the twenty ninth, do you want me to push it back so you can be there? Or are you okay with just voting on the final three like everyone else?
I will probably not be gone on the twenty ninth, so I can be at the rebranding meeting.
Well, no, I mean, I can't move it, it's, we haven't set it, we haven't advertised it, just let me know.
I will.
What you want me to do.
Yeah, I would say you set dates and if we can be here, we can be here.
You have anything else on the report or anything, or you wanna commend the staff, it's been a, I mean, we've had a good month, it's been a good summer. And if you haven't noticed, I think that a lot of things have gotten done that we wanna get done, but we have been shorthanded again and I think that a lot of the things, despite being shorthanded, have tried to get done, so. Trees have been removed, stumps have been removed, parks look great, I'm trying to think of all the things, curts out concrete, even though it wasn't the right thing, we're starting to pour concrete and curbs.
Pool went great till last Friday.
Pool went great, I had nothing to do with the lawyer going out, I was in North Platte, so don't blame me.
It was dry due lately, I mean, it was first this week, so.
It was, I was doing general because of the age, but you're right, dude, if timing could have been anything, but. Yeah, it's a surgery, but we're, we're working on it right now to get it fixed while the fall's here, so.
We're closing on Sunday anyway.
Yeah, we were closing on Sunday, but.
Yeah, so you lost two days, big deal.
Uh, so the swimming pool board and the board, they did have a very good summer, revenue wise, we, we only lost fifty thousand instead of sixty thousand. So, you know, it works, you know, everything's good.
Started draining yet, the pool? What was it?
Draining.
Started draining it yet? I don't know, well, I pulled the motor out this morning and, yeah, but I wanna drain it for. Could maybe use for some other water. Yeah, 'cause it's gonna get dissipated before I wanna dump it all again, so.
Got everything on your report?
Probably more, but I know we're gonna start this on electrical, because we promised.
Yeah.
Okay, Bruce, do you have anything?
Actually, it's kind of a supplement to some of Mike's reports, but I don't have anything else other than that. You see, in his stuff, he mentioned LB two fifty-six. It's a nuisance cleanup, nuisance property law. I have five copies here, if anybody wants to read them or we can make more, I can leave one with Courtney. I ran them and I thought you might discuss it, but we've gone, gone far enough on that stuff tonight. What they've done with this new bill is put in place a statute that says, you can require owners of vacant property to register and pay a vacant property registration fee every six months. Like two hundred bucks or five hundred bucks. And it's designed to, yeah, within limits. And it's designed to stop the deadbeat mortgage holding out of county people from just sitting there. And you can bill them, rather than prosecuting and fighting them, it's an administrating way to keep charging them something every six months and make them pay attention. It's an interesting program.
So you like that, son?
Yeah, well, I think it's workable. There are five copies, we can run more if you wanna read up on it. Decision laws are annoying to read, because old law is not underlined and new law is underlined. This is an all new bill, so every speck of it is underlined, which makes it kinda weird to read, but it's all underlined. Uh, they're here, pick one up, but that's otherwise all I got, and we won't go anywhere with that tonight. But when the league gets their ducks in a row and come out with the recommended ordinance, this should be one of them.
Yeah, I, I, I wanna pursue it.
And we may have to get after it. It's, it's another way to put pressure on these deadbeat mortgage holder property owners that don't pay any attention to you.
The other thing that concerned me a little bit, Bruce, and I know this aside, everybody's wanting to get going, but we went to Senator Breezy and he's the, uh, the author of this bill and I brought it up to him because I said, I'm gonna use it. I would like to sit there and begin, cause it became law on July nineteenth or something like that. And he was there on the eighteenth or twentieth or what, and, and I started to talk to him about it and I was a little discouraged. I'm not so sure he even knew what his own bill was. So I tried. I mean, he was trying. I'm not gonna say that he did anything wrong, but it's like, uh, it was the wrong time because he wasn't answering the questions I wanted him to answer about that. Uh, he just kinda did it in general terms. Well, I've got this bill.
Well, the details are here and you gotta make an effort if you're gonna read through it and follow it. I think it's a workable system.
I'll bet that'll be one of the agenda items when we go and link it into a court.
It will, but Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna make you very progressive because I.
May have it passed before.
Oh, I don't.
So I'll be bringing it up on some of the properties and that.
But this sort of thing will put pressure like up on the people with the Steintruss House. That's what it's for. These fly-by-night, somewhere at ten buck two mortgage holders that acquire title of property and just go sit there. And then you can put some serious pressure on them with this system.
It does apply to commercial buildings as well.
It does, not just residential.
Nice for Main Street, cause we have some.
Different grades.
That.
But anything vacant, if it's just unoccupied and they're not doing anything with it, it's not really for rent, then you can do this. And there's exceptions for government buildings and there's exceptions for winter Texans and stuff like that, but it's a, it's a usable system. That's, that's all I have.
Thank you, Bruce.
Um, yeah, I appreciate you guys making the copies for, to update our book. However, there was some misspellings and inaccuracy in the dog line.
That goes right to American legal. I don't do any of that.
Okay, um, so like in F, it says at least twenty-five thousand dollars instead of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars? And then, um, there's a bunch of misspellings in there, so.
Well, that does come off, and I haven't even got through them, so I don't know.
Yeah, they take off exactly what we sent them, so.
Mark them and just mark them or mark them on the photocopy and then drop them back with Courtney.
We can send it back to them.
They gotta fix them to make them look like.
Yeah.
Our real ordinance is that they have.
The ordinance itself is correct. That's just your copy for the code book.
Okay.
They're, if American legal's type is goofed up, they will fix it.
Yeah, they'll fix it.
They charge you a pretty penny every year for rebranding pages and stuff.
That was all I have.
Tom?
I just got two quick ones. On the aging thing, I see you took the three hundred and fifty deposit, now thirty-nine eighty-nine. Is that being pulled or is it back in circulation or? And the other one, are we still spraying mosquitoes?
Yep, every Monday.
Who are we billing for that? I don't see it in claims.
I already paid it in full.
Paid it in spring.
I paid on test control. I mean, the road was like a forty-seven or a five thousand dollar bill. We pay him upfront and then he just takes it off of there every month.
All right.
I get, I got all paperwork in my office too and I can stop him like.
Well, I just was looking through my, my last two months.
Free, Mike.
Why don't you just say it like it is? The, the mosquitoes are the size of B fifty-two's right now.
That's all I got.
Ryan, you got anything?
Two old and one do the whistle?
Whistle, it is, uh, I will jump all over Jake to get it done. He has promised us the last two weeks. He's kinda going back to his old city ways, but we do not, uh, hire him. But I will get him on it immediately.
And I didn't look on the actual city website, but I haven't seen anywhere else that would taste like the tree trimming above the sidewalks.
The, uh, and we talked to, Kurt and I talked to NCPBD, so we're gonna go ahead and work with them to do the tree trimming and get that all taken care of.
I mean, not entirely, just above the sidewalks.
Yeah, that needs to be.
The property owner?
Has to be the homeowner.
Why are you concerned?
Well, we, we've always helped out. NCPBD's gonna come in and trim a lot of that back, so.
From sidewalks?
They're gonna do secondary and everything, so when you're looking at the sidewalks, chances are those trees are probably running into lines or getting close to lines and they're gonna come in and do a very strong, uh, tree trimming, you know, program because we've got a few places around and, you know, if we have to from the city side, but if you get chopped off from the sidewalk, it's gonna look, it's gonna get pruned and it's gonna be kinda straight up and down, so. Um, but yeah, we've got that as part of our work order to try to work with the homeowners and work with NCPBD, so.
Yeah, I guess they do that one, I think.
Courtney, pass your term.
No, say it. I'm ready, cause if you don't, I'm gonna answer it.
Answer it and then we'll say it.
The, uh, signs are complete. Radar signs are all here. The only thing we're missing is a couple of straps. When they sent them, and these are pretty big items, but we've got all the parts. I, my goal was to have it before school started and tomorrow, Thursday, and all we're waiting for, I told Kurt today, is straps. So he was gonna call Park.
He's supposed to let me know and he said they sit here, but.
Myself showed up for his, so he's.
He's, but that's all, we have everything ready.
Yeah, it'd be nice if we, yeah, I'm up for school.
That was, that was my intent and still is. I mean, we've got it in, we just can't hang it.
It's been over a year process.
Yeah, they're pretty big, uh, yeah, and they throw plastic, uh, I don't see.
After two years, it's pretty pointless now. These other towns, actually, we should have just got it, saved our money and kept it.
Not going to this company ever again, just to let you know.
My other thing, just to refresh my memory, a couple of months ago, we were talking about the trash totes, about the businesses and the churches and everything. Did we ever get that figured out?
Yeah, it's done.
It's all done.
I don't know.
I've had no complaints, none.
It's been a very.
I've had people switch from dumpsters to totes. That's it.
I just don't remember it, so.
They all got a letter stating what their new rate would be and I had one person stop in out of all businesses in town.
And it was, it was, it was a gesture well needed, so compliment, uh, council person according to that for recommending that.
Anything from the community? I, I assume you're done right?
Would you say those town hall meetings are gonna be, Mike, for the Ecap? I know that you probably didn't have a set date for time.
I don't. I'd like to do one Friday.
Just sometime like in the next, I mean, what was your, your?
What's that?
I'm cooking hot dogs on Friday.
Oh, that's right. I should bring that up to Ecap, which is quick bringing up these things. But the seventeenth, one of the things that came out of the Ecap process, uh, was community, uh, more in tune with, you know, the, the, everybody around and, and not so divisive. So we have the city along with other entities, I must say the city, but there are some that may help us out, are gonna put free hot dogs to everybody in the park and, and buns and we have some buns donated and stuff like that, but from five to seven, so if you wanna represent the city and just say hi to newcomers, it's, anybody wants a free hot dog, just come out to Chover's Park.
We do stores and no smarts?
That's up to you. We asked that same question today.
I asked that today, so. Is the school part of it still or new? I have heard a lot of compliments about the.
Please stop.
I have heard a lot of compliments about the memorial and the Chover's Park, Jason Memorial. And Cole, since it was in the paper that he built it, has received like six phone calls asking people to build the same structure in their yard. He's told them all no, but, um.
Can I make one suggestion if he does that? He needs to make it a little bit bigger because the swings bang into each other.
He did it on purpose, so you couldn't go.
So that it would slow down and wouldn't be banging.
So you couldn't go over the fire and you couldn't go kind of.
All right, well, I.
It was by design.
Explanation, did I went up to the.
That was by design.
Uh, so it won't be Friday there. I, I got this, I think the first one.
Okay, I just say to be determined.
Probably to be determined next week.
It'll be next week.
Yeah, I wanna get it as quick as possible.
Like you said, and then it took you out.
Make a motion to adjourn.